Okay, you're on. All right, we're gonna open the meeting for Board of Selectmen. What's the date today?
Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, for 5:32.
And I'll read this, and then we'll roll call into executive session. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order pending certain provisions of Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. The meeting of the Board of Selectmen will take place without any public present, and will be made every effort to ensure that the public can adequately... That's not really what I need to read, is it?
Hmm.
All right, let me read this one. There we go. I got it. Pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if any, open meetings may have detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigation position. Also to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel to actually conduct collective bargaining and contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Votes may be taken. Uh, duh, 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 duh. Pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements purpose seven, citing to the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 22F and G, votes may be taken. So we'll roll call into executive session. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So if you want to stop recording, thank you. Okay, one second. That's it? And you're in line. All right, we're gonna open the Board of Selectmen meeting for February 16th, 2021, at 6 o'clock. We stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, a free and sovereign republic, which is sacred and holy, under God, indivisible, justiciable, and justiciable. All right. So, let's see. Jason, I know you love to approve the warrants and read the warrants.
Absolutely.
Can you do that for us, please?
We have to make a motion to approve the enroll warrant 2133 in the amount of $167,052.07.
Second.
Motion in the second. Uh, we'll roll call since Kathy is remote. Uh, Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Great.
Make a motion to approve the enroll warrant 2133 in the amount of $1,282,371. This breaks down to the pound, $106,253.39. Water and sewer, $12,993.79. Payroll withholding, $32,919.85. Light bill, $47,181.46. Kentucky assessment, $920,855.41. And grants, $122,355.20. Wastewater and cable, $39,811.90.
Second. We have motion in a second. Any further discussion? We're gonna roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we can go back, and we have, uh, oh, I don't know, nine executive session minutes. Maybe we can get a motion unless someone wants to discuss one meeting in particular to accept all those in a lump?
Yes, I...
Motion?
Yes, I do. Uh, on a discussion, uh, on one.
All right, let's take that one out. Is there only one?
Uh, one that I want to do a question, yes.
All right, which one?
Uh, Friday, August 7th.
August 7th, all right. Bill, did you have any concerns on any of them?
One, October 22nd.
October 22nd. Jason?
No.
Kathy?
No.
All right, so let's get a motion to... Oh, I guess, do these minus the, uh, I don't know. I guess we just read them all. Phil, you want to do that?
Sure.
We'll skip over August 7th and October 22nd.
I'll make a motion to release the minutes from executive session meeting, uh, of June 24th, 2020, August 24th, 2020, August 27th, 2020, August 31st, 2020, September 28th, 2020, October 13th, 2020, and October 28th, 2020.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. I don't think there's any further discussion on those. We'll roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
So, let's go to meeting minutes, August 7th, 2020. Phil?
Uh, that was the question, August 7th.
Yep. So is that?
You're, uh, you're ready for that one?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I wasn't at that meeting, but, uh, based upon these minutes, the meeting opened at 11:00 a.m.
Yeah.
And, uh, executive session, the meeting ended at 7:04 p.m. There seems to be quite a timeframe. Was that, was that a mistake in, uh, uh, typing that out? It seems like an awful long meeting, and there wasn't really much, uh, on the agenda, so it sounds to me like it was probably a typo.
Good catch. Yeah, so we'll have to adjust that. Go back and adjust that start date. I'll ask, uh...
Well, no, it wasn't the start date.
It was the end date.
The end date.
Eleven at the end date.
That was a Zoom meeting we had at 11:00.
Um, yes.
Yes, it was.
I don't think it lasted more than an hour, but we'll check it. Good catch.
Okay. Uh, Bill, you had a question on the other one? October 22nd?
Yeah, the 22nd. The attendance lists me as being present. Uh, but when roll call was taken, all were present but me. Um, so...
You were there but not there.
Well, I'm actually mentioned in the meeting in the minutes, so I guess I had to have been there, and I don't recall missing one.
Okay. All right, so we'll get the August 7th and October 22nd cleaned up for the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Hi, if you want, I can, um, go through my notes from the summer and see if I have anything about, um, that August 7th. I think we might have had an 11:00 a.m. meeting, but I'm not positive.
I think we did.
We did. Yes.
And if I remember correctly, it was only about 45 minutes instead, but...
Yep, but I can look through my notes and check.
That's seven months ago, and I don't know what I did yesterday, so...
I know there was a meeting at 11:00, and I wasn't able to attend that one, and, uh...
Okay.
I can actually confirm that I was at the executive session meeting because I have notes dated that, that day.
Okay, so we need to clean those two up. Got it? Uh... All right, well, what are we doing next here? So we have now the approved minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting, January 4th, 19, and February 1st. Anybody have, uh, any questions on those? You want to do it as a lump, or do you want to take something out because you caught something that was in error?
I just wanted to take out the first, February 1st, because I wasn't consistently having meetings.
Uh, you were working.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything on the other two meetings? Kathy, anything that you have issues with?
No, I haven't noticed anything that I would have an issue with.
Ed, anything on those?
Uh, no, I didn't notice anything.
Bill?
I've noticed nothing.
All right, so someone want to make a motion for approval of the 4th and the 19th, and then we'll amend February 1st because Jason was part-time? Does that work?
Yeah, but I'll abstain from that one.
Okay.
Sure.
You want to abstain from that one, or you just want...
Yeah, I'll just abstain from the first.
So we can approve all of them.
Okay, got it, so we can approve all of them, okay.
So I'll make a motion where you approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meetings from January 4th, 2021, January 19th, 2021, and February 1st.
We'll do this February 1st one separate because he's got to abstain from that one.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah. So just the 4th and the 19th at this point.
What, then the 19th works for me.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I don't think there's any more discussion, so we'll roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Um, are we doing the 19th? Because I wasn't present for the whole meeting, so I wanted to abstain from that one.
Yes.
Okay, so can I vote abstaining on that one and yes on the others? Or do you need to break it out?
Chairman, I withdraw my motion, and then I'll do them separately, so this won't...
That works.
We can...
Thank you.
dispense with the confusion that this may cause.
My head's spinning.
The motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting on January 4th, 2021, only.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call again. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Got it, all right.
Motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting, January 19th, 2021, only.
I'll second that.
Roll call for Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Abstaining because I wasn't present for the whole meeting.
Yep, perfect.
Okay.
Motion to approve minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting from February 1st, 2021, only.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. I don't think there's any further discussion, so we'll roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
I'll abstain.
Kathy?
Which meeting is this one now?
February 1st, 2021.
Ah, okay, sorry, I'm scrolling back and forth here. Let me just see it. Uh, hang on one second. Yes, I'm, yes, thank you.
All right. It was painful, but we got there, all right. Next up, we have COVID discussion. I don't know who's in the meeting from Board of Health. I think they're away for the most part. Uh, I will say, Kathy, I did see your email later this afternoon about the numbers decreasing and the towns, all towns going to yellow, which is great news. Um, there is, or have been, updates on the local nine-town consortium, which is going well. Um, I'm actually waiting to volunteer at one of those at some point this week, I think. Um, but yeah, I don't know. Kathy, if you want to add anything to this? I don't think anybody else from Board of Health is on the meeting.
No, I just, um, I think it's really good news that, that, that the numbers continue to decrease and that all of the Kentucky towns are coded yellow. Um, I know that the state is looking at the situation with busing and schools, and they're still, um, considering the options for bringing students back, so it looks like we're heading in a very good direction.
Anybody else have anything to add for COVID discussion? Uh, start with you, Ed? No? Bill?
Uh... We don't have the Board of Health here, so it really... I don't have any questions to ask ourselves.
Great. Jason?
I'm good, thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, I just have one, one item I forgot to mention. I was hoping that our next agenda, or maybe the one after that, if the next one is too crowded, can we start to talk about the reopening plan for the town hall? Because I've noticed in, in my reading of emails that some libraries are starting to open part-time in, uh, public towns, and I feel that we should start looking at the plan. I'm not saying we're gonna open, but we should have a plan. What is it we're gonna set for criteria to consider starting to allow the public some access to, um, our town departments? We, I think we need to determine what our criteria should be.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be a difficult discussion until we have, uh, a number of vaccinations already in arms, and what that looks like is probably part of the plan, so, uh, either the next meeting or the meeting following that, we can put that under COVID discussion.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so I'm gonna skip over budget because I think that that's gonna be quite a while. Um, Kathy, you wanted to talk about town meeting planning?
Um, I just wanted to, again, get a discussion going because I believe, uh, West Newbury has already voted their annual town meeting off to, I wanna say off the top of my head, is it May 22nd? It's a Saturday. I don't know what Merrimack has done, um, but I thought we should start to talk about it. Um, and I'm, I'm thinking, if we postpone the town meeting, does that, that automatically postpones the election? Are they, are they're linked?
I think those are two separate entities.
Two, two separate votes.
So we could postpone the annual town meeting but not postpone the election if we wanted to?
I don't know that, um, I mean, last town meeting, we had, uh, loosening of regulations where we didn't have to mandate 100 voters. I think we loosened it to 50 or something, I don't remember. Um, I don't know that we're, we're gonna have that same flexibility this year where by May-ish, we should have some sense of normalcy, I guess, for, um, vaccinated people and the people still wearing masks, obviously, so I think it, it, it's not gonna be a repeat of last year, but, uh...
My question was, did we want to consider an outside venue?
We can always consider an outside venue, but what if it snows? I mean, or whether it rains, it's...
Well, I know, I think West Newbury does it like they have the vent, the day, and then they have a rain date. I'm not sure how they post that, but that seems to be what they did. I, I thought Merrimack did theirs outside as well, if I'm not mistaken, last year?
We did.
Yeah. Where was it? At one of the schools? Sweetheart?
Or, or one of the fields.
I, I'm open to any consideration, I just, I, I don't... Jason, you have a thing?
Yeah, I know Ipswich had theirs outside, and their emergency one outside as well, and they had large tents set up for the rain. And, because it rained that day, and they had it still. And it was quite cold.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I don't know if we want to just keep it at the same date and then have it in Bagnell and, you know, have the 100 people and spread them out best we can, or if we're able to reduce the requirements of that 100 people down to 50 again? I don't know that the, the state has mentioned anything about it. I haven't seen anything. Kevin, do you, have you heard anything about requirements with town meeting?
Yeah, the requirements for town meeting are the same as they were last year. There's no change. Um, it, uh, requires a certain amount of social distancing and a few other things. Um, Kathy's correct. What a lot of towns are trying to do is to roll them back into May, when the expectation is the weather would facilitate, facilitate having an outside meeting because then it gets a whole lot easier with respect to social distancing. It also tends to give you more time for more people to get vaccinated, uh, COVID levels to come down even more. Right now, per the bylaws, you're scheduled to have your election and town meeting, um, I'm sorry, your town meeting on April 26th. Um, you know, that's pretty dicey in terms of predicting an outside meeting. It could be one of those gorgeous April days, could be cold as heck. So, if you, if you're thinking outside, I would encourage the board to think about May. You've got complete discretion in this because of the Governor's Emergency COVID Act from last year, which has been continued, so you can pretty much do anything you want, even if you're violating your own bylaws. Some towns don't even have town meetings. They're still working on continuing budget resolutions. Um, so you get pretty much carte blanche to do whatever you think, uh, you'd like to do. What you decide what you'd like to do, uh, then I'll check, uh, with the state and town council and make sure all the legal, um, i's are dotted and t's are crossed for you, but I would encourage you to think in terms of what you prefer to do.
Yeah, uh, personally, I'm okay with pushing it out a few weeks and hoping for better weather in May if we want to try and do it outside, even if it's in the field at Bagnell. Um, but, go ahead.
Well, I was just thinking that I know when we had the largest town meeting I have ever attended was the one in the school vote. And... Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm gonna make it, but I'm not sure I'm gonna be okay. Anyways, I guess the point I was trying to get at is we were able to use the gymnasium. We barely get 100 people to show up at a town meeting. 50 in the caf and 50 in the, uh, gymnasium. You could easily distance six feet apart and have no problem. So I'm all for a Plan B, but I think that you have enough square footage in that building to do it safely.
Yeah. Ed?
Uh, I don't, I don't have any problem with doing it outside.
I think if you want to do it outside, that's fine, but you gotta probably safely push it to May.
Yeah, exactly.
And even May's not a guarantee of weather.
Right, right.
And then you're not, uh, you're probably not gonna be scheduling it for, um, for an evening. You're probably gonna schedule it for a Saturday.
Mm-hmm. Jason?
Yeah, I think scheduling for a Saturday would definitely give you, give people a better opportunity to actually show up at the meeting. And outside, I think is just a good way to do it.
I'm open to either, so if someone want to make a motion to at least preliminary plan for an outdoor town meeting in early May, then that's, that's fine by me, too. Kathy?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking at dates. We, we could do it on the same day as West Newbury, on the 22nd. Am I missing something? So, um, I, I favor the outside meeting. I just remember with all the fans running and, and everything else that was going on inside to distance and be protective. Uh, it was a difficult meeting, and I'm thinking towards if we're actually going to bring forward a structural change to town government, um, to give us another, uh, month, uh, to get a little further along this COVID thing and get more people vaccinated, would allow more people to feel comfortable going to town meeting.
Yeah. Um, one, one point to that. Chris, do you have any logistical problems with an outdoor meeting versus an indoor meeting?
Well, we would have to get some kind of an audio setup to accommodate that. We don't have anything portable that could do that. On, sure, we could rent or buy something, you know, like that. We don't, we don't have it in hand. We could, you know, if you decide to make that decision, I'll start working on that.
So, the discussion that we had before the meeting was about hardware and hardwired stuff in, in the Bagnell and the other rooms and what that would look like. So if we decide to do outside, does that change a whole lot with that cost? Or you think it's just moving it from one situation to another?
What I would try and do is, uh, you know, hit the deuce necks, the wired old deuce necks that we already have. I'd like to test all of them, but I think they still work. Uh, we'd get some kind of an audio snake, uh, and plug that all in, and you'd need some kind of a P.A. system to, to be outdoors.
Right.
We don't have that either. Um, you know, because when we're at Bagnell, we just use, uh, that built-in one.
Right.
But some kind of a small mixer, some kind of a snake. I think we have the microphones covered, but we want to just double-check that. And we'd also probably want one or two wireless for, you know, audience or moderator, whatever that might look like. But I could get together a package, uh, and, you know, get that all to these guys and start putting it on a couple.
Yeah, I mean, this, depending on how the setup is outside and where. I mean, in a typical town meeting, the finance, finance committee, the moderator, the Board of Selectmen, and everybody else, they're kind of up front.
Right.
And people can see them because we're mostly on the stage or whatever. I, I think, you know, if we're all in the same plane, that kind of changes that dynamic. I don't know if it's better or worse, but it'll change that dynamic.
It's, it's probably fine, uh, as long as I can see everybody with cameras. That's not a matter of where you are. Um...
Well, we can have you build a stage outside, too, in your spare time to make sure that we have that. Okay, so that's not gonna change a whole lot?
The biggest thing is, you know, getting us power out there.
Right.
Making sure that I get the approval to, you know, we need to rent something and bring something in, we can do that, and, you know, make sure that we play that.
If, um, if we do vote on something like that tonight, if you can get us preliminary numbers on what that'll cost versus the other stuff you were talking about, that way we can weigh that, too?
Yeah.
If we need to change it back to indoor in late May or whatever it looks like?
We're gonna need to get stuff no matter what we do because I don't like the system we have in the Bagnell.
Yeah, last year was falling apart.
We've had major interference issues, so, you know, we'll be looking at spending money that we have just hanging on in the area.
Okay. So...
It's funny, though, you know, it's funny in the middle.
Yeah, so Kathy, if you want to make a motion that you moved town meeting...
So I'll make a, a motion for preliminary plan to, um, do you want it to be a preliminary plan right now, or do you want to vote to...
Yeah, preliminary until we get the numbers from him because that might change things, depending on what that looks like.
Okay, so a, a, a motion for a preliminary plan to move the town meeting to Saturday, May 22nd, to be held outdoors.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Bill?
Can we change preliminary to exploratory only because you're gonna have two dates? If you're gonna hold an, an outdoor event, you better have two dates, a rain date. And then...
Point. I agree, friendly amendment.
A week or two weeks of solid rain in May. Factor in the cost of a tent. Factor in the cost of, um, rental equipment that we may need, uh, to conduct this outside. So, um, before I get all, before we, you know, jump on this horse and start riding out, uh, I'd like to know, you know, what the total cost could be in worst-case scenario.
Right.
That's my only point.
So what was the word you wanted to use?
Exploratory, as opposed to preliminary.
You accept that amendment?
We're just exploring kind of...
I, I, I accept it, I, but I also feel that no matter what we do, we should consider moving the town meeting into May. At the, and the Saturday is fine with me, even if it's inside.
All right, any further discussion? We'll roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I have one more question about this. Do we need to vote when we're closing the town meeting warrant? Or is that set by a bylaw?
No, the board has to vote to close the warrant. Typically, um, you'd want to vote to close it no later than six or seven weeks Typically, um, you'd wanna vote to close it no later than six or seven weeks prior to the date you're actually conducting the meeting. Lots of towns do it two months prior. What you're, what you're, when you set the date to close the warrant, what you're doing, you're not closing it to yourself because the, the warrant is the property of the selectman under chapter 140. So, what you're actually doing is you're notifying the public, no citizen petitions will be accepted after the warrant closing date. So that's all the warrant closing date really represents. But, yes, you are correct. It's a separate vote of the board, and it closes the warrant by a date certain for a particular meeting. Now, as soon as you, you close the warrant for that town meeting, the warrant for the next town meeting is automatically open the next day. You don't take a motion to open the warrant, that's always open. You're only voting to close it for a particular meeting.
Bill's at?
Well, we need to close the warrant on some date. I mean, we typically close it, I thought, somewhere around now, um, in the past. But I, I just, we can look back at our old minutes if you want.
I don't think it's this early that we closed the warrants, is it? I thought it was March.
I don't recall specifically on the date we, we, we did it. I'd have to look back in my notes.
I thought it was more March, but what do I know?
Okay, I can look it up.
If you're gonna have a May town meeting, you could close the warrant in late March and still be in good shape, obviously.
Well, we'll look at it for the next meeting.
If you're gonna have the April 26th meeting, you'd be wanting to close the warrant around the first of March in order to have time to put the thing together.
Yeah, we'll look at that for the next meeting, then. Uh, that'll be early March, and then we'll have that as, uh, at least a discussion to do that. All right, we're gonna move over to Salem Street Underground Fuel Storage Request. So, Kevin, I saw the information on that. I don't know that there's a whole lot that we need to do on that, other than maybe not do something? I think that's what we're being asked to do.
Yeah, um, the way this works is the fire chief, um, actually, uh, the board of selectmen reacts to, uh, give the, uh, to approve the, uh, underground fuel storage request. And then the fire chief has to also give a certificate. And so, um, once you've acted, then he goes out and he, um, and he does his inspection and gives his, uh, his permit. It's a, it's a dual process. Some communities like the fire chief to do his thing first, and then, um, you know, once the fire chief is done, then it comes back to the board. Unfortunately, we don't have a policy on it, and we don't have an institutional memory. Nobody remembers the last time one of these was done and how it was done. So, I just reviewed the statute, and I talked to the chief. And his recommendation was if the board had no objection to this, to approve it. And then he'll go through a much more detailed, uh, review of it. I will tell the board that I've seen boards get, boards of selectmen get extremely detailed about the permits that they give. Um, it's really kind of custom because, to the extent you don't get detailed, the fire chief does. So it's kind of up to you folks which way you wanna do it. Unfortunately, I can't give you any history about how you've done it in the past because we can't find any records, uh, to suggest what the procedure was in the past.
All right, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, yes, uh, to, to Kevin, uh, to the chair. Uh, does the town planner have to weigh in on this, and does conservation have to weigh in on this?
Well, I will tell you this, um, the policies that I've used in the past, there's a variety of town boards, committees, commissions, and departments that weigh in on every license, and it's different for every license. So typically, with a fuel storage, uh, permit, you'd have the fire chief weigh in, um, for purposes of fire protection. You'd have the, uh, building inspector weigh in for purposes of, um, ensuring conformity with zoning and/or the town planner. They, either one can accomplish that. Um, you'd have the board of health weigh in, um, you know, in cases, any, uh, ancillary issues related to boards of health and proximity of septic systems and things like that. Obviously, you don't want storage tanks near septic ta, uh, septic, uh, leaching fields. And, other than that, I can't think of any other departments that would necessarily have to weigh in. But that, those would be the typical ones.
Well, thank you.
Any questions? I was gonna ask Mike and Rebecca Williams.
That's where I was gonna go. I'd like to talk, um, see what Mike Dempsey would have to say, um, what his thoughts are, and Rebecca's as well.
Yeah. Rebecca, are you on? Can we unmute her, Catherine?
Mike, I see a gentleman on here labeled ComTank. I suspect that might be the petitioner.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, now, this is Stephen David. I'm an attorney representing, uh, the applicant in this matter, if, if I could be heard.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good.
Uh, good evening. Um, I represent Fadi Isa and Anfa LLC. They are the owner and developer of the, uh, property in question. I just wanted to let the board members give, give a little update on what's going out there. As you know, this is a mixed-use, uh, facility. Uh, wanted to let you know the building, uh, we do have a building permit, and we do have an order of conditions. So the matter was reviewed by the Conservation Commission at the time that the permit was pending. Um, the foundation is in, the building is being framed, um, a lot of the underground is in. The, uh, uh, septic system has not been installed, but the retaining wall along the property has been installed. I did ask, uh, Mike Maroni, who's the general contractor, to be here this evening. And I also asked a representative of ComTank to be here in the event that you had some technical questions about the tanks. Uh, just for your own information, uh, this particular site is gonna contain two 15,000-gallon tanks uh, adjacent to the canopy area where the fuel will be distributed. Um, and as I, as I said, this matter was looked at very carefully by the planning board, obviously by the building department. And the re, uh, the reason for the, uh, coming before you this evening is, uh, set forth by Mr., by Mr. Pecos is that, um, uh, we do, uh, ComTank is requiring us to get, uh, your approval. Uh, and obviously, the bulk of the inspections and the detail associated with this type of installation is typically, based on my experience, I'm here in Dedham, Massachusetts, uh, carried on by the fire chief. So, um, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not quite sure. I, I don't know how you folks handle it, but typically, uh, in, in Norfolk County, where I, I practice a lot, uh, the selectmen do the approval, defer to the chief, and, um, and the chief ultimately is the one who signs off uh, on the tanks, the fire prevention system in the canopy, and the other, um, uh, pump distribution of, uh, equipment that is used, as well as obviously the fire protection in the canopy, et cetera. So, I'm hoping that's helpful, um, and like I said, we're, the three of us are here to answer any additional questions, technical or otherwise, uh, to help the board in their deliberation.
Thank you. I do have a question, and it's more of perception than anything else, with the possible conflict of interest between Chief Valentine and Fadi, who is an on-call firefighter in town, where the chief is now signing off on a tank, uh, underground tank installation for one of his firefighters. There's, is there a conflict of interest or a perception of conflict of interest with that?
Is, um, Mr. Chairman...
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, the owner of the facility is a firefighter in Groveland?
Fadi was an on-call firefighter. I don't know if he still is.
I, I, I believe he still is, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I believe that is, in fact, the case. Um, he's not full-time, he's a on-call, uh, fireman, that's correct.
Right, so I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that there...
Here's what the law, here's what the law says, uh, for the board's edification. 268A, the conflict of interest law, puts the onus of violation solely on the employee. Uh, the town has no collateral, um, liability, um, and in fact, no responsibility whatsoever other than providing us the opportunity for instruction and education for their employees. And annually, as the board knows, every employee is required, uh, to take a test and file that test with the Ethics Commission, indicating that they understand the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter, chapter 268A, and will comply with it. So in this case, there is no conflict necessarily on the part of any town official. There is a potential conflict for that firefighter. And I would strongly urge him to contact the Ethics Commission, where the entity that'll be signing off on his permit, A, is the board of selectmen, um, who is his employer. You are the chief executives of the community, and you are his employer, and you have a, what's called a master-servant relationship with him. Secondarily, the fire chief, who has an even more, um, closer relationship as his immediate superior, this gentleman, this firefighter, should get, uh, a ruling from the Ethics Commission to protect himself. But it does not in any way protect the town nor require the town to do anything.
All right, so it was more of a perception thing that I was wondering because of that relationship?
I'm glad you asked the question, Mr. Chairman, because through count, through you to counsel, Attorney David, you might, you might wanna counsel your, your client to, uh, avail himself of the lawyer of the day at the Ethics Commission.
Yeah, I, I, we'll, we'll follow up with that, and we'll provide that ruling, uh, to, to the board, uh, as soon as...
That'd be good for the board to have, and the chief as well.
Right.
Never bad to have something like that.
Right.
Thank you.
So, um, Jason, any questions?
No, no questions at all.
Kathy, any questions?
Um, I guess I would just like to see, um, information about how we do this in Groveland. I mean, I, I understand that they were not able to find, um, any information online about this. And I also understand that it may be typically that this is what we do. Um, but we didn't post this as a public notice. And other, other times we've approved things that it, I seem to feel that we've done like a public notice. I just wanna make sure that we do what we're supposed to do. And I, I don't see anything here that tells me what we're supposed to do. So I, I know everyone's trying to tell us what other towns do and what looks normal, and you could be very right. You could be completely right. I just don't have that information tonight, that's all.
Yeah, um...
There is no public, there is no public hearing required. If there was, we'd have, we'd have posted a public hearing. This is, I've, I've done hundreds and hundreds of these things over the years. And as I said, some boards take a very elaborate review, and most boards just simply approve the, the permit and then allow the fire chief to get into the deals, details of it. Frankly, boards of selectmen aren't, you know, uh, experts on underground storage tanks, and typically, they don't try to put themselves in that position. All they wanna know is, A, does it comport with zoning? Building inspector covers that one. Are there any wetlands implications? Concomit covers that one. And, um, you know, is there any, uh, any issue with taxes? We do that automatically in, in my office, in the finance director's office. So, um, pretty much all those things are done anyways. Normally, the process I've seen, it all gets presented in a package to the board of selectmen, but you don't have a policy that really organizes that effort. Um, but it's all gonna get done anyways. It'll just get done after the fact if you approve it.
So, you're saying that we're approving a permit, but I, there's no permit in our package, right? I just, I just try to figure out what I'm approving, that's all.
Counsel, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe the board's approving a license, correct?
That's correct.
The license is, okay, so what does that look like?
The license to, to distribute petroleum at the site.
Oh, like a business license?
Yeah, it's like a liquor license.
Yeah, it's...
Okay. Well, so we don't have the license either, though?
Um, we don't, but, um, if counsel has a license form that, um, um, you have available and you wanna send that to us, we'll, you know, we'll get the board to execute it with signatures. Uh, but I've seen them done both ways, with a nice little yellow license form with the town seal on it, and I've seen them just a vote of the board, so...
Uh, I wasn't prepared for a license. I thought the board might have it. I mean, these, these licenses come up rarely in these, in these small towns. So typically, you don't have a...
So rarely we don't have any.
Yeah.
Uh, so I was just looking for a vote of the, of the board in order to provide it to, to ComTank.
Okay, uh, Rebecca, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yes, I'm here.
You, do you wanna weigh in on any of this?
Uh, sure. So I know that the, uh, actual site was reviewed by the Conservation Commission and the planning board, and they have received their approvals. Um, but I do know that when Catherine had asked me about the fuel storage, I had done some research, and I had found the legislation under, um, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 148, Fire Prevention. It states that there's no building or other structure shall, um, such as keeping storage of fuel shall be, um, and, uh, allowed unless the local licensing authority shall have granted a license to use the land on which such building or other structure is to be situated after a public hearing. Notice of the time and place of which hearing shall have been placed at the expense of the applicant by the clerk of the city, et cetera, et cetera. So it does look like there is a process. I did send over Catherine the application for, process for other communities and, uh, as a template. I know that we only have two other, uh, gas stations in town, 301 Main, which is, was outdated, uh, was an older filing. And then 97, I believe, has been there for quite some time as well. So I'm not surprised that we don't have anything on file just because we've only had two gas stations. Um, and they, they're pretty old. So I, I'm not sure how the board would like to proceed with that legally, but I do know that from a standpoint of the planning and conservation, they have received their approvals, and the site has been reviewed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, where there's really, what, one gas station now? Like you said, there was one that's been out of service for decades now. So there probably isn't a whole lot of process of paperwork that's gone along with this. Um, but I do think that, that, um, conflict of interest piece should be addressed uh, by the owner and the lawyer for the owner, uh, just to make sure everybody else is covered. Anybody else have any questions on this? Bill, you had anything else?
Uh, no, I mean, you know, as long as all the guys dotted and the Ts are crossed, uh, we should do everything we can to promote more business in Groveland. So, um, I, I have no problem with it, as long as everything, conservation, sounds like they've looked at it, they're fine with it. Planning is fine with it. Uh, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and, um, Chief Valentine said that the Lieutenant Belforee is a fire prevention officer, and Assistant Chief Rashala is an engineer, and the three of them have worked on and will be doing the inspections together. I think it's covered, but there is that one piece that should be just, uh, buttoned up. So does someone wanna make a motion on this, or Kevin, what do you suggest?
I'd suggest if it, if the board has no objection, that you approve the license pending, um, receipt of the ethics opinion uh, that the employee will solicit. And secondly, uh, review by the fire chief, which is necessary anyways. But if you wanna condition the license on those two things, then you've pretty well bracketed everything you need to do.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license, uh, dependent on the response from the Ethic Commission and review of the fire chief.
I'll second that. A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I just, I was just trying to follow on Rebecca, what she was reading from, and she said something about a public hearing. Is that gonna happen after our vote, or should that happen before our vote?
I don't have the statute in front of me, and that is information that I did not have prior to tonight. So, I can't comment on it, but I would say this. If the statute requires a public hearing, and we have not conducted one, then I am quite certain counsel, um, for the applicant is going to do, research that in the morning, ascertain if that's true, and then reapply so that we can pu, uh, publish a public hearing. Otherwise, a license absent the requisite statutory requirement would be deficient, and in point of fact, the license would be no good.
Yeah, I, I have the sta, I have the statute up. I'm not seeing it, but I, obviously, I'll take, uh, Mr. Pecos's, uh, perspective and, and implement that in the morning with a more thorough research. I, I don't recall that being, uh, necessary, but, um, I will do that.
So can we add, um, if required, also to have a public hearing to that list of two things?
Still amended.
Does that make sense, Kevin, that we add that if it is needed?
Sure.
Okay.
Maybe Rebecca can point him in the right direction if...
Yeah.
Can I just ask, is Rebecca still on? Is that what she's saying that she would like to see us do?
I was just suggesting that when the question was asked to me, what I knew about the process, that is exactly what I had stated in my research, is that I found that typically, other towns, like New Orleans, and then also Ashnet, whatever, um, Kevin would also, uh, worked at at one time, they went through the same, similar procedure.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just, my only comment to that would be, I, I think that, uh, possibly that relates to, um, planning and other, uh, uh, public hearings that would be required to be held prior to getting to this point. So we weren't, we wouldn't be able to be in a position to apply for this license but for the prior approvals we received. And, and I just skimmed the statute, and I don't wanna correct those all of them, uh, without really getting into the weeds on it, so... But I don't recall having a public hearing on that license, but I could be corrected.
Again, if, if the statute, you know, we can take it later tomorrow, but if the statute requires a public hearing, it's, it's much less. The onus is much less on us than it is on counsel and the applicant. Because again, if a license is granted, which requires a public hearing, and the public hearing isn't held, the license is no good. It's not valid. And any installer that would put that tank in with an invalid license would be putting himself in great jeopardy. So, I'm sure counsel is gonna clear this up for the applicant, um, first thing tomorrow morning. And then my suggestion, uh, counselor, is that you shoot an email, uh, to my office and let us know what you discovered. And if you do indeed discover a hearing is required, then we'll have to postpone this and go through all the hoops, uh, to do that. But I don't believe it is either.
Yeah, that's understood. Well, I'll, I'll follow through on that.
Thank you.
I guess I'm just confused as to why we're not figuring it out, what's required. And that information was sent in that, from Rebecca, that I didn't see, um, prior to this. I guess, I just would like to make sure that we don't vote votes that just become invalid because we didn't know. I mean, that makes us look like somewhat incompetent board of the selectmen, in my opinion. I like to be competent, you know, so, and I, I agree with you hard. I've known nothing about these tanks, absolutely nothing. I do want a new business to open in Groveland, I'll be telling you that upfront. I just wanna make sure that we come across with some degree of competency. And Rebecca's new position in town puts her in a place to give us some advice about this, to give us some ideas about what we might need to know. So, I don't know how we can vote. I mean, if we can vote this predicated on us being able to confirm one way or the other whether this hearing is required, I'd like to have us be able to determine it on our side of the fence, like have a two-way thing, you know?
We just added that to the, to the stipulations. There's three stipulations. There's the ethics letter, there's the, um, if a hearing's required, what's the third one, Jason?
Permit from the fire chief.
Permit from the fire chief. So we already have that in place as far as the requirements, to make sure that those are in place before anything else goes forward. So that's already been done.
Okay, so we're gonna determine it on our side, too. Then that's fine, I'm good then. Go ahead, call for the vote.
Yeah, I didn't mean to create the impression we're not gonna check this. We are. What I, what I'm saying is, um, if it requires a hearing and counsel for the applicant doesn't understand that and work with us to ensure it happens, then a... then a license has been issued which has no legal validity. So the onus of ensuring that is both on him and, of course, it's on us. But it's a whole lot more on the applicant because he can't operate.
Right, right. All right, so let's roll call vote. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right, so we'll look for that follow-up from those three things, and we'll move on those when we get them.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. There'll be an email from council to me, and there'll be some further email from me to the board giving you an update on what we discover within the next day or two, okay?
Fantastic.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is the summer recreation program, summer schedule. Is Matt on? Did Matt make it? I don't know. I see Matt on there.
I don't see him in the waiting room.
Not on, no, sorry.
Is that Catherine?
Yep, that's me. He's, Mike did not log into the Zoom.
Matt?
Matt.
Matt, sorry, yeah, Matt.
All right, so we'll table that until the next meeting. Maybe something came up with him, but I do want to talk to him about what he's thinking. And then maybe we'll have more updates by that point at any time. So let's, do we need a motion to table that, or can I just table it?
I'll make a motion to table the discussion on the summer recreation program.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Um, yes, sorry, I was muted.
All right, so we'll table that. All right, next up, budget discussion. Everybody's favorite.
It's just that time of year.
All right. So I made it to tab 20. I think tab 20 in my book here. Don't yet tab 20. As far as reviewing some of the budget requests and information in those, I have a few items that I want to explore, but I want to talk, see what everybody else has first. So we'll start with Jason. Do you have anything that you might want to bring the board in for budget discussions, particular board in for budget discussions?
The two things that came to mind was the town clerk and her making a request that we think about getting an assistant for her. She had stated that Essex and Rockport both had assistants for their town clerks. And Essex is considerably a smaller town. And I'm inclined to agree with her just because she spends far too much time here and should spend a little bit more time with her family.
We all had that, right?
Yes.
All right, so you were going to talk to the town clerk. Anything else?
Then on 16, which was for the police department, it looks like they moved some of money from the reserve officers to the overtime salary. And I was just questioning.
Yeah, I actually talked to Jeff about that.
Chairman, I can give you an explanation for that.
One second, one second. I did talk to Jeff about that the other day. He explained in a lot of detail the why that happened. And part of it is a state law that's changing. But yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, the state law, the Police Reform Act that got a lot of publicity not long ago, seems to be saying, it's not finalized yet, seems to be saying that the use of reserve police officers may be terminated in the future. It's not a definitive decision, but it looks like the drift of the legislation may include that. The reason being, they're not as highly trained as regular police officers who attend a six-month academy. You got an expert on the board in Ed, so he can certainly speak to that subject much better than I can. Because that's a possibility, the chief has shifted money from reserve police officer pay to overtime because the shifts that are currently being worked by reserve officers obviously would have to be worked by regular police officers in part on overtime. So he's made that move. As a practical matter, the money's within the budget, and it's not sufficiently restricted so that if this doesn't happen, you know, he can still use it to pay reserve officers. He's not required to use it for overtime. He's just showing you in the budget what he thinks might happen and reflecting it properly allocated. But there's a lot of water to go over the dam and under the bridge on this one because some police departments out in the western part of the state, if they can't use reserve officers, their PDs are out of business. So I don't know that this is necessarily going to happen. There's a lot of conversation going on, but that's basically what the chief reflected in that budget.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do you still want the police chief to come in to explain that a little further?
No, it's more than adequate. Thank you.
I saw the same numbers, and then I called Jeff about some other stuff. And I'm like, hey, I was looking at this. And then he explained the whole thing, and I'm like, got it. All right, Kathy, anything from your side?
Um, I've just started looking through it in a preliminary fashion. And I guess I thought, I saw a couple situations where it seemed to be that the line items in the paper booklet weren't really the same numbers on the omnibus. And I just, I need to look at it further. I'm not quite sure why that would happen. But just an overall thing, just like major changes. The new department, I think we definitely need to have them in, you know, Rebecca in and be very transparent about what's going on and why that's helpful to the town. I thought, I reached out to Rebecca and I pulled up our old ORC chart. So I thought we could try to, you know, create an ORC chart for that department to kind of show what it would be. And the other thing was, and maybe I'm missing a couple other big changes, but in the fire department with the hiring of the two full-time personnel on a grant, and we know the grant doesn't last forever, I thought in the interest of transparency, we should list the positions, even though we're not funding them from the tax rate yet. We should list them as grant-funded within the department because eventually we are going to have to fund them if we keep them.
I can give you a sep, in fact, I am working on a separate spreadsheet that'll show all those details that should be out, maybe out this week, maybe out next week. Because we have to have that both to request the reimbursement from, reimbursement from the federal government on a monthly basis. And we need to have it for budget planning because you can't put this in the budget because the money comes from the Fed as a direct-for-reserve expenditure, which is a technical term that basically means the money comes in and it goes straight to them, and it doesn't flow through the budget.
No, I'm understanding that. I'm just saying to list them with an asterisk, I think, which is something we've done before in the past, saying that it's grant-funded. And if we are trying to plan for the future funding of it, I don't know if it would be a good idea, but should we start to put additional funds in the reserve fund or somewhere so that when the eventual day comes when we have to fully fund it, we're not grabbing from all of our other departments?
Yeah, and the budget summary that I wrote for you, and you all may not have had a chance to dig into all of that, but I basically said in that document that I would be proposing in a warrant article, which the board will get at a future date when I draft the warrant for you, an amount of money to do exactly what you're saying, Kathy, to establish a stabilization fund. The law allows you to establish stabilization funds for virtually any reason. So I'm going to propose to the board that we establish one for the future funding of these officers when it becomes necessary. But you will have a complete breakdown for the cost of the two officers, salary, all fringe benefits. That's all going to be spreadsheeted. And as I say, we're working on it right now. It's a fairly complex piece of work. Part of the issue is we've got health insurance rates on them from now to June 30. And I've been waiting for the GIC to publish the new insurance rates so I could get this spreadsheet accurate for July 1. And they just this week announced preliminary rates and then turned around and said they're not going to finalize until next month. So I'm going to have to do a guesstimate and then accuratize the spreadsheet later because I want to be able to get the spreadsheet to the board in the next couple of weeks. So you'll have that information.
Okay.
But again, just so that you know, the cost and the grant are a 100% wash for three years. So there's no impact on the budget.
I understand, and I just think in the interest of transparency to the town meeting, we made a public announcement that we now have two full-time employees on the fire department. We should be able to present that at town meeting. They should see that, those positions listed, you know? And then the only other thing is, you know, within departments where there are significant swings in line items, as I get through it, any, it's not just about the bottom line for the department. I don't want this to be a shell game where departments just move money around to get through one year. So any line item that's swinging by a significant percentage, I'd want to get more information on. It doesn't necessarily mean the department comes in. I just need to know why this is changing by such a high percentage.
Okay.
I can bring in any departments that the board would like to meet with. And I'd suggest you do it at your next meeting in order to get that box checked because we do need to move the calendar. There is pretty detailed information in the budget summary document that I wrote on every single budget that's changing and why. So I would invite the board's attention to that document. That's why I wrote it. And it's pretty, you know, it's like four or five pages long. And as I say, it's very detailed. If, after you read that document, and some of the department heads, particularly those that are proposing changes, wrote their own memo, and that's in your budget book as well, and those are extremely detailed. So once you read those things, then if there's additional questions, I think the most efficient way is for the board to say, hey, I've got some more questions. Bring in the department head because I suspect between my memo and the department heads, most of the questions you might want to ask are already answered for you in your budget book. And I know it's four inches thick, so. And you've only had it for two weeks, so I wouldn't presume the board's gotten through it all yet. But I gave you, Bill had requested, you know, the same summary sheet that you'll see at town meeting, and I did that and pushed it out to everybody last week. So you can scan down that and you can see the departments that are changing. So if you just take like a highlighter, highlight them, and then you go into the budget book, instead of reading, you know, a thousand pages, which is what the thing is, you can just go into the budget book, find the sections that you've highlighted that have changes, and you're going to have a pretty good explanation of why they're changing. And then the first tab in the book is the budget summary that I wrote. And please avail yourselves of that information because that's also very detailed.
And I guess the last question is, like, if we could just get an actual revenues to compare to this year's forecast so that we know that our new forecast is going to hold up. You know, having enough money is always the biggest concern I have. I looked at the, briefly looked at the capital requests, which are very large this year. So I'm concerned. My biggest concern overall is that we may not have a balanced budget. And we might, I'm pretty sure we won't have enough money for all of the capital requests. So we're going to need to prioritize and make decisions. And, you know, I like to be supportive of our finance board. As they go through these budgets, they spend more time than we have on them. So I like to let them get a look at it, too, and see where they're going on it and support what they're trying to do as well.
You will be pleased to know that I have a document coming for you, which I refer to as a budget balancing formula, which I don't, I can't find that you've had, you had something like this before, but I can't find it in the file. So I'm going to give you the one that I'm writing. And what it's going to do is list all of your revenues from the prior year and expenses actual, meaning your actual revenues and your actual expenses compared for FY9, FY20. For FY9, FY21, the year that you're in right now, it'll have a column that'll say budgeted revenue. In other words, what you expected to collect this year and budgeted expense. And then a column right next to it, year-to-date revenue for each one of those categories as of probably December 31, and then year-to-date expense, and then projected revenue for FY22 and department head requests. And it will be balanced because the law requires us to submit a balanced budget. So you'll be having that document fairly soon. That's an immense amount of work to put all that together. And the key thing right now, basically, it's all put together. The document I mailed you, it has all that except one column. The column it doesn't have is year-to-date revenue. And the reason it doesn't is because we are working on that right now, literally as we speak, with the treasurer, collector, contractor company that we hired because we have nobody on staff that could do that, except probably myself. And that, I would have to drop what I'm doing for a month to figure all that out. So we have her working on it, and I'm hoping to get that out to the board sometime in the month of, in the month of March so that we'll know the budget is in fact balanced and everything's fine. There's only one expense number that I needed, and I've got it now, which is, well, there were actually three. There was Whittier, Regional School, Essex, Regional School, and Pentucket. Essex and Whittier, I gave you those budgets last week to put in your books. One is a very, very close estimate. One is a reasonably close estimate because of the nature of how the Essex Regional School budget works. We can't do much more with it in terms of estimating what it's going to cost until later in the year, actually in the fall. But you get a pretty good estimate of what I think's going to happen and why. And that's very detailed. That took a lot of research and a lot of time to write. But I took the time to do that so that you'll have on the record once and for all, how does that budget work? Because that budget is, we're not members of the Essex district. We are communities that, we're a community that sends students there. So we pay a tuition fee plus transportation and sped costs on an actual basis, which is very different than the way we pay Pentucket and Whittier because we're members of those districts. So I took the time to write a multiple-page memo that takes you through how the Essex budget gets done because it's very complex so that you'd understand come fall, when we get the actual student counts, if the budget, if the cost deviates from the estimate, you'll know exactly why it deviates. I don't think it will much. The last number I needed was Pentucket, and I just got that. So I will be plugging that into the formula, and I'll be looking at all this and very soon be coming back to the board with, hey, good news, it's all balanced, or, hey, bad news, it's not balanced. And here's what we're going to need to start thinking about. But we've got all the numbers now, so that's the good news.
So the only, the last thing I was just wondering about was we typically have put aside money for, is it OPEB, the retirement thing that we are in a deficit on?
Yep.
And the stabilization and the capital stabilization. I know we did not certify a very high free cash this past year, so I was wondering if we're still going to be able to do that?
Yeah, that's, again, that's a normal part of the budget process. And I've noticed, I've seen all those warrant articles. I went through the warrant in detail from last year. And of course, during the tax rate setting process, we have to go through all of the spending from the spring with a fine tooth comb. That's for the current fiscal year and compare it with the revenue to make sure you're balanced. Otherwise, you can't set a tax rate. So we've already done that exercise. And so I've got a very clear idea of all what I call off-budget expenditures. Off-budget expenditures means things that you spend money on, but they're not in the budget. So those are typically special articles at town meeting. There's also several expenses that don't, they're non-appropriated expenses that I have to account for in that balancing formula as well. And those are things like cherry sheet assessments because you don't vote those. You just get a bill from the state. The overlay, which is the reserve for tax for abatements and exemptions. And finally, the snow and ice overrun, if there is one, because you don't typically appropriate that, that's a levy against next year's, that's an assessment against next year's tax levy. And so all those things have to be accounted for. And if you're going to make a contribution to OPEB, that's all going to be in there. So all that's in the works. Have no concern. It's all being addressed. It's just that we're, you know, we're going along in the normal step procedure, and we will get there, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Phil? If we can do it quickly, that would be amazing.
Yeah, it's going to be real quick.
Yeah, it's going to be real quick. I did take your spreadsheet, Kevin. I love it. And I took the opportunity to kind of plug in some numbers that weren't there, with a modest increase. And I haven't taken the deep dive like you suggest, that I'll be doing next. But I'm concerned too, because right, you know, from a 50,000-foot view, I'm looking at over, or just about 7% increase year over year. So, I know that's got to be trimmed back, and like I said, I haven't taken the deep dive, but there are things that definitely, one that comes up, one that sticks out right now is the snow and ice budget. I'm glad you mentioned it. You flatlined it for 2022. I thought that we were going to try to steadily increase that number over time so that it actually matched reality.
Well, it, it, it does match reality for the most recent couple of years. Now, does it match reality for this winter? We don't know yet, obviously. Does it match reality going forward, next year, the year after? Well, you know, it's, if I look at three years ago, those two awful winters that we had in February, where it didn't snow in January, and then it snowed every Sunday night into Monday in the month of February, this budget would be grossly inadequate to cover either of those two years. Those two years, though, were storms of the century, so hopefully we won't be seeing that again anytime soon. I, you know, it's a, it's a hard one to judge, Bill. I certainly don't, would not recommend to you that you should snow and ice, but I'm also equally cautious about putting a lot more in it because it could end up being fallow money. It just sits there and you don't use it. And this budget is going to be tight this year, no matter how it looks right now. It's going to be tight because that, that Penn Tucket Regional School number, I've already gotten a look at it, and I don't want to get into it publicly tonight, but that's going to be a challenge.
Yes, and I've plugged into your spreadsheet Essex and Whittier, which your numbers, they were blank at the time. So, I agree with you.
Exactly.
It's going to be tight.
Those numbers on that spreadsheet.
It's going to be tight as a new pair of jeans.
Don't reflect the current assessments that we're now aware of.
Yeah.
So, what I'm saying is, I, it's kind of a fine line. If the board wants me to put more money into snow and ice, I could certainly do that. If your feeling is, you know, we should beef that budget up a bit, we would need to take it out of someplace else because there isn't going to be the opportu, we don't right now have sufficient revenues to be able to beef up a budget substantially beyond where those budgets are now.
Right. And as we get into deeper dives, I may be able to find you some of that money. But right now, that was my only, that was my only question, so.
Well, that would be great.
Ed?
Yeah, just a couple that I think Kevin can, can clear up pretty quickly. Under tab four, selectmen's, under the town audit, if you're looking at percent increase, you've got an increase of 100%, but it doesn't show that on each individual line. It, it looks like it's leveled.
Which budget is that, Ed? I'm having a little trouble hearing it.
Okay. The town audit, you're showing a percentage increase of 100%, but it doesn't look like it. I'm just wondering if that's just a typo. Tab four, selectmen's.
Yeah, the percent, the, the percents were buried in the budget. I use the same software as you've been using for a couple of years. And there's a formula in the Excel spreadsheet, which I wasn't aware of, the formula was embedded in there. And so, I plugged in the department request, and that column got auto-filled by the formula. And I didn't even look at them, to be honest with you. Jason brought it to my attention right after I sent the budget books out, that a bunch of those are wrong. So, you know, frankly, I'd have to go through the entire budget book, look at the formula, and correct them all, and what you'd end up with would be accuracy with respect to the percent increase. You can do it mentally just as quickly. I mean, if, if the budget's 25,000, it's still 25,000, that's zero. It's not 100%.
All right.
I don't know why the formula in there would have done that, but like I say, I, I didn't want to spend the time to go back and fix them all because there's literally hundreds of them. But maybe the best thing to do is just go in and purge them all. I just delete every formula.
I have that one.
And then, you know, we can compute the percent increase case by case. I, I, I mean, to be honest with you, the percent increase column, I think that's kind of Mickey Mouse, to be candid with you. I mean, it's, you know, if a budget goes up, you can, I think the explanation for why the budget's going up is much more valuable for you than the fact it went up, you know, 2.3% or 8.9% or whatever. If it's a big increase, what's the explanation? But I'm at your disposal. If you want me to go in and fix those, I'm happy to do it.
No, that, no, a good explanation, the next one was tab five, finance department?
Yep.
Under postage, with the, with the pending postal increase, do you think that you're requesting enough at 16,000?
Well, I think so. What I tried to do was respond to the reality that we don't know what the form of government is going to be until the study government committee concludes its work. And then in point of fact, whatever they propose, it's got to go to town meeting. Town meeting may approve it, town meeting may not. So, what I tried to do is give you the resources in the budget to go either way. My assumption is, if you go with a town administrator form, that based on current market conditions, my estimate is that you can attract a perfectly capable town administrator with somewhere between three to five years of experience and a master's in public administration for about 105,000, and that's the number I put in. If you make that switch to a TA, you are certainly, and you eliminate the finance director position, then you're certainly going to need a full-time treasurer, and you're certainly going to need an assistant, just as you have now. But because you have a full-time treasurer, you won't need a treasurer clerk. You're also going to need a few more hours a week from the accountant, because the treasurer and the accountant are going to have to pick up some of the work that the finance director does now. So, what I've given you is increased hours for the town accountant, what I think is a realistic salary for a full-time treasurer, a assistant treasurer, budgeted basically at the same as it is now, elimination of the treasurer clerk position, and the creation of a town administrative position. When you shake all the current salaries out, it actually didn't result in that big an increase. I thought frankly it would be a much bigger increase in the budget, eliminating finance director and going with a town administrator, but it turned out to be not that big an increase. There is some increase, though. Now, if the town administrator form is not approved, it would be easy enough to amend that budget to accommodate having a finance director, a 30-hour town accountant as you have now, a assistant treasurer collector, and you'd reestablish the treasurer clerk position. So, you could modify the budget pretty quickly.
Okay. Yeah, the other one is under tab five, I'm sorry, 15, 15, under the insurance.
I have that one too.
You're, you're plugged in about a 5% increase for the GIC insurance, and based upon estimates, obviously, that's just a, that's just a guesstimate that you had mentioned before.
Yeah, in point of fact, and again, it's in the, it's in the budget summary document. What I'm doing right now is I'm going to be bidding that property casualty and workers' comp program. My understanding is that the town has never bid the property casualty workers' comp. Now, property casualty workers' comp insurance products are just like pencils and paper. If you don't bid them, then you're not getting the best price. Now, unlike papers and pen, paper and pencils, insurance products are typically bought through somebody, a broker or an insurance trust. And in Groveland's case, we buy our P and C, property casualty liability and workers' comp through the Mass and the Local Insurance Association, which is a municipal collaborative. However, it's just like any other insurance company. If you don't make Maya work at it, then you're not going to get their best pricing. And the way you make them work at it is you bid it. You put it out for competitive proposal. My prediction, my, my expectation is that you are going to spend less, and that budget is going to go down, and I'm going to give you some good news. And Bill, maybe that'll be some of the money that we would then shift over to snow and ice, for instance, because my expectation is it's going to be a significant number that we're going to take. We're going to be able to reduce the insurance budget. But I didn't want to count our chickens before they hatch, so I put in the current used funding plus 5%. In point of fact, Maya advised me to put in current used budget plus 7%, and I thought that was overly, overly estimating. And when I informed them I intended to bid, they were, I guess, distressed, would be the word, because they'd much prefer that we don't bid it, because they know there's a couple of competitors out there, they're going to sharpen their pencils, and Maya's going to have to sharpen its pencil. I did say to them that if they wanted to just cut the premium by $20,000, which is about 10%, that I wouldn't bid it, and they declined to do so. So, I said, well, then we're going to bid, because if you don't bid, you don't get the best pricing. So, we're going to bid.
Good job. So, there'll be a, should be a saving there at some point. There should be a saving there at some point.
I think there'll be a significant one.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. That's it?
Yeah, I'm all set for now.
For me, I have a lot of things that everyone else already mentioned, but question for you on town council. We budgeted 65,000 last year. Do we know what we've used so far roughly?
I don't off the top of my head, Mike, but there's going to be a report coming to the board in, let's see, a week, which will have the expenditures on all department budgets as of the end of February. And as a QC check, what Ellen and I have talked about is taking a look at those budgets that are in, that look like they're going to overrun. Some of them we know, but the others that are unexpected, and town council is on the watch list, we're going to kind of look at that, revisit it, and if it is running over, then we, and for that matter, there's two or three other budgets, we may have to do some shifting in the budget for FY twenty-two. Right now, as of the first of February, it was running okay.
Okay. Because I see that it's requested that it went down $5,000, but I would like to know what we've used halfway through the year-ish.
Yeah, and so far, I think, you know, based upon a normal year, I think you're fine with that. I just threw, you know, as I reported earlier, I just gave town council a request for a significant opinion for the board.
Yep.
Which is going to require some spending some money. And so, that could have an impact on that budget, which suddenly sends it in a different direction, and we may end up, you know, having to amend the FY twenty-two budget. At the time I wrote that budget, a month ago, it was running well below current budgeted level. But it's a dynamic, town council is a dynamic budget.
Right.
Now, you only need to have one big, serious thing happen, and you can spend a lot of money on the lawyers.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm very conservative with whatever we go to town council with because of that, because we've, in the past, have run either right on the budget or over budget on that. So, I try to be conservative on that, but if we could get an idea of what that is looking like, you know, around March 1st with whatever, four months left.
Because I like to tell boards, this, this budget is your budget, it's not my budget. I draft it and give it to you, but it's your budget. So, if the board is more comfortable on any of these lines, increasing them, or for that matter, decreasing them, just tell me where it is you want to do that, and then I'll go into the budget and find, you know, wherever it is that we need to shift some money around. And certainly would welcome any ideas Bill has in that regard as well.
Okay.
So, if you want to see the town council budget go back up to 65, you guys just say so by consensus vote, whatever, and I'll make it so.
Okay. And then the final one I had was the border health and the $10,000 increase for the new border health agent. So, I would like to have that discussion.
Yeah, you'll have to have the border health come in to give you that explanation. I can't help you on that one. That's not my proposal, that's their request.
Okay. So, I think that gives us an idea. Like I said, I made it to tab, I think, 20. So, by the next meeting, I'll make it through the rest of this, and then, what's our next meeting? Is it the first? Anybody know what our next meeting is?
And I can tell you in a second.
Yeah, March 1st.
All right, so.
Could I just ask one question to go forward to our next meeting? This is the kind of thing that's sort of, I think, very confusing. In the booklet, the accountant is not listed, but in your spreadsheet, I know the accountant is listed with an increase. So, personally, my input, just me, one member of the whole board, I prefer to keep our financial department the same until the town meeting votes have changed, because I find all this differences is going to create more confusion, and I find it confusing just looking back and forth on these spreadsheets, because the accountant is not in the tab that Blackman Watson asked about, but is in the spreadsheet that you gave us. So, it just, yeah, if we could kind of go about what we already have and kind of keep that constant for positions in the department.
Kevin, as far as a budget approval or amendment or whatever we're going to do with the final version, when does that have to be done by?
I would, you know, let's assume you have a May town meeting.
Yep.
No, let's not do that. Let's assume you have an April, because that would be more time-constrictive. Let's say you have an April town meeting, April 26th, I think, was the date. We would pretty much have to have the budget set, ready to go to print by about the first of April, as a practical matter, because there's a distribution requirement in your bylaws and a posting requirement, et cetera. So, we'd pretty much have to have it finalized by about April 1, which gives you another, you know, five weeks to conclude action on the budget. Now, I don't think that's going to happen, frankly. I think you're probably going to end up moving into May for a million different reasons. I noticed that the finance board's budget review meetings go all the way into the first week of April. So, that being the case, they would need to be voting a little sooner than they're currently scheduled in order to be able to publish their recommendations for an April 26th town meeting. But I, I suspect they're probably assuming it's not going to happen April 26th either. So.
Well, my thought process is.
Yeah.
Hold on. My thought process is, the next meeting, we finish going through the tabs and asking questions of what we want to do as far as bringing boards in to discuss the budget that they propose, which would then put us at the 15th. And then on the 15th, well, that would be the 29th, that we could finalize the budget on a vote based on those conversations.
Sure, that would work. Yeah.
So, that, that's what I was thinking. That's why I was wondering what our timeline looks like. But so, if we were able to do that by the 29th, it seems to fit into even an April timeline meeting, even though we're probably going to move it to May anyway, so.
Yep.
Okay.
And if you use tonight sort of to get preliminary questions answered and concerns addressed, and then at the next meeting, we do the same thing. And if between now and then, there's any particular departments that you want to have come in, and I, right now, I've got on my notes here, border health is so far the only one, then at the next meeting, you have continued discussion. You know, I think tonight, one of you raised a question about potentially increasing snow and ice. One raised a question about potentially increasing town council. Kathy's made a point about, you know, restructuring the finance director budget and town accountant. So, you really would need to decide those things at your next meeting, so I could figure out how to make all those changes and pay for them, so that at the meeting after that is when you'd actually vote. So, I would say the next meeting is the one where you want to make decisions about specific individual budgets, so that can get incorporated into the overall budget with a plan to vote it two weeks later at the last meeting in March, if that makes sense to you.
So, the next So the next meeting is March 1st. And I think I was saying what you were suggesting to do on the 15th.
By the 15th.
By the 15th. And then once that 15th is done, we can vote on the changes or budgets or whatever we need to do by the 29th.
Yep, that would work. Sure.
I think that works for what my schedule looks like as far as getting through the rest of this and finding out any questions. As far as what's on your list for bringing departments in, I have Town Clerk, right? Because you wanted to ask her about her assistant.
Yes.
And then I think Kathy had mentioned Fire Department because of the on-call payment line item, and then there was something else.
Yes, just some swings in the line items and adding the two lines to show the two full-time positions, just to put them in there with an asterisk, no money involved.
So right now I have three departments: Board of Health, Fire, and Town.
Economic Development.
Got it.
The new Department, Economic Development, Planning and Conservation.
You want to bring that one up?
I think to understand, you know...
All right.
I see a 35.
I got it. Economic Development, too.
I think somebody had mentioned that already.
Yep. All right, so that's four for now. But that gets us more than halfway through the budget, which is pretty good.
Okey-doke.
All right. Moving on. Old business, which continues to be old business. Admin Coordinator Hours. Is that, Kevin, is that your old business? I don't think that's my old business.
No, that's not mine.
All right, I don't know why that's on there. Maybe Kathy was trying to swindle, Katherine was trying to swindle something in there. Um, let's see. Vote to the Board, Contract Negotiations with Teamsters Union Local 170.
Yeah, there's nothing to vote there. We don't have the agreement.
Oh, we're getting, we're going right through this. All right. Finance Director's time?
Just a couple things. The Department Annual Reports, per the Board's request at the last meeting to get that going, they're all coming in. I've got a deadline of this Friday for them. Assuming everybody meets the deadline, which everybody's been very good about that. A lot of departments are already in. The bulk of them will come in on the deadline. We'll do any cleanup work that's required, because it's all going to get put in a certain font and a certain type size and everything else. And as soon as we get it all cleaned up and ready, we'll get it off to the printer. Last year, I think we printed 150 copies. So unless the Board has a different direction you want, we printed the same number of copies for this year as we did last year. I do note that the Board of Selectmen has a report in there, and I don't have it yet. Would it that I could draft it for you? I would do that. But of course, I'd be drafting about events I don't know anything about, so I can't help. I'm sorry. But I would need the Board's report as well. And then the plan is to ship it off to the printer sometime around first to second week of March, in which case we should have it back. I'm told they like to have it back by the town meeting, so it can be distributed, if not before town meeting, at town meeting. And we certainly, you know, will make that deadline no problem at all. So that's what's going on with the town report. The ATM warrant is the next big project on the horizon. Other than everything that's going on with the budget, the town meeting warrant, I'm going to start working on the town meeting warrant probably next week. I'm going to start putting together all the boilerplate, the introductory stuff, the backup documents that go with it. We can't finalize it until we're, as we go over the next two, three, four, five, six weeks. But I'm going to start getting it pulled together so that as decisions are made, we can start dropping numbers in, rather than trying to put that thing together at the last minute, because it's a huge, huge job. And the last thing, oh, I already told you. I sent you the preliminary budgets on Whittier and Essex. And I would encourage you in particular to read the Essex North Shore Regional Vocational School Budget Memo, because that really lays out how that, how we pay the bill for that. And it's quite involved. And it's good for the Board to have an understanding of how it works, because despite my best estimate to, best effort to estimate it, the actual budget come fall could be different. And it's important that we all understand, if it is different, why is it different? And that is all. I have the report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Next up, Selectmen Times. Kathy, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to shout out to the Highway Department and Highway Superintendent. They've done a great job on the ice storms and the snow storms. And it's been really, really special to have the sidewalks cleared so that we can actually get out of the house now during this COVID thing and take a walk still. So that, to me, that's been a really great thing to be able to know that in Groveland, at least, I can find a sidewalk to take a walk on. So I really appreciate that, and I feel like they deserve a shout out for that. Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah. I think I'd like to make a comment about the Admin Coordinators Hours. Just because I know that while I've been looking at other towns and what they're doing and what they have for support staff, the Admin Coordinator is a big part of that support. And I'm concerned, because we used to have that position. It was eliminated. And when we bring in somebody new to replace Kevin, they're going to expect somebody to be there in that role. And if I, I think if we don't start looking at what's effective and efficient in terms of staff that we should be having here, I think we're just going to set up the next person that comes in to fail.
So is that a...
Well, if the Board would like, I certainly could prepare a questionnaire comparing what area communities have for staffs and put that into a spreadsheet memo format for you. Happy to do that. That's not a massive amount of work.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
I could do that.
That would be helpful.
That's good, Kevin. Yep.
Yeah, that's good. Good. That would be helpful.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Bill?
Selectmen Times, I've got a few things. We had a High School Building Committee meeting last week. So I want to let everybody know that the construction is 30% complete and is on schedule at the current time. If you drive by, you can see the auditorium walls and the gym walls are complete. Most of the concrete slabs of the flooring are complete in Buildings A, B, and C. So that project is going along swimmingly, just to update everybody. The pines, there are a lot of requests out there for the pines. The high school has, I've been in contact with the high school, so I have a good idea of what their schedule is going to be. I've requested a schedule from Babe Ruth twice. If anybody knows anybody out there, they can help me get a response from Babe Ruth, because right now, all I'm getting is crickets. I'd like to make them the number-two priority behind the high school, but without a schedule and knowing when they want to use that ball field, it's very difficult for us to determine how to allocate that use to them. So if you could help me out there, that'd be great. Let me see. I quickly like to address the great number of parents that have been copying us or emailing us with regard to the school committee. I just want to let you folks know that, you know, I share in your plight. I really do. I have a young son who's in school, and I share in your frustration and your confusion over the school reopenings. As I said, I have a young son who is having difficulty going through this ongoing pandemic. He's been affected negatively, you know, academically, emotionally, athletically. It's not easy. There's not a lot of people I know that haven't been affected by this. And I know it's little consolation to you folks out there with children trying to get them back into school, but you need to know that you're not alone in your struggles. There's a lot of us that share these struggles with you. The simple truth of the matter is, though, while we appreciate your keeping us in the loop, this Board, as far as I know, is pretty much powerless to alter, sway, influence, or otherwise affect policy of the school committee, which is a separately-elected Board. They're only answerable to the voting public, not to us. So it is difficult, and I can empathize with your frustration. The only thing I can say at this point is what I try to tell my son. Whatever doesn't kill you is only going to make you stronger. This won't last forever, so keep that in mind. We do see a light at the end of the tunnel. But with that in mind, we really need to double down our efforts and our resolve to make sure that all the hard work and the accomplishments that we've seen to date don't go in vain. So please buckle down. I know it's frustrating. I understand it. I'm in it with you. But we've just got to get beyond this point. So, you know, please keep us in the loop. I don't mind getting the emails. I do read them all. It's just difficult to respond to all yours individually, so I figured I'd do that in a public forum. But, you know, keep the stiff upper lip, as they say, and we'll all get through this together. The hiring of the Treasurer Collector, how is that going, KP? Is that, do we have the ad in the paper or wherever it goes? Have we had any responses? Are we getting closer to getting that person onboard full-time and cutting our ties with this very expensive consultant that we have currently? Can you give us an update on that?
The Board directed me to not advertise that position. So it's not advertised.
I thought we discussed the last meeting we were going to try to put, we were going to put in a...
I think we decided that we were going to hold off on that because of the perception of hiring, not being able to fill it, hiring a contractor, then going back to try to fill it. We were going to give it some time before we were able to put an ad in the paper. And then also with the possible change of town government coming, there were just too many things to change all at once. I think that's what I remember, but again, that was two weeks ago.
Okay. All right. And then one last thing. I just want to address the email that, the lengthy email that most of us got over the weekend. I'm not sure of the reasons why. I guess I really don't care to know. It doesn't really affect me one way or the other. But the gist I got from the email is the short staff we have here is being inundated with a lot of requests. And that's not going to be productive to the short time they have in the offices. So I'd like to suggest that for the sake of the folks that work here, because as I look at it, if all five of us did the same thing, I'm not sure the people around here would have time to go to the bathroom, let alone get their daily tasks done. I know we used to do it before. Maybe we've got away from that habit. But in the past, all requests to personnel in the town typically went through the chair, so that it was one point person that the town employees were contacting with and not all five of us. Really, we have the ability to just overwhelm the staff in a heartbeat if we all just jumped on the request wagon. So I think it'd be a great idea if we could funnel our requests through the chair. I know Mike doesn't want to hear that, because he's probably got enough to do already. But just as a way to make sure the staff stays focused on the tasks at hand, given the limited number of hours they have, and that the chair can really kind of coordinate all this stuff. Because as I said, if we all did the same thing, then I'm sure we all read that email. It would just, nothing would ever get done. Nothing would ever get done. So that's my last point.
Thank you. Ed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so there's always two sides to every story. I'm not going to go through all the details here. I understand what Selectman O'Neill is saying. I agree. This should have been solved with a simple resolution. So if the simple resolution just needs to go to the chairman, I'm glad to send it to him. My only, my only goal here is during this COVID, it has been extraordinarily difficult to, with my work schedule, to have some time to review warrants. So I'm basically signing things that I have not seen. They've sat on a table. I've seen them across a room. But I have not really had the chance that I like to have to go through them. So I will work on that through the chairman, which is fine, because I, above all else, don't want to have to read another five-page memo. So I like your suggestion. I agree.
Ed?
I think there ought to be an agenda item on that.
Sure.
At some point, just to, just to discuss that. The other thing was the, again, I echo the same comments about the highway. They did a great job. And I agree with Jason that we need to revisit the Administrative Coordinators Hours.
Okay.
Other than that, I've got nothing.
Okay. I'm going to hold off on anything for myself under Selectmen Time. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Kevin, I saw your email on the ESSER2 fund that lower the Pennsyltucket Assessments. Do you want to...
Yeah, the Pennsyltucket Regional School maintains funds that they're allowed to roll over from year to year. And they recently received the preliminary state aid figures and are beginning to compute the assessments for the communities, which looks like, the way it works, Newbury is going to do very well under the new formula. Merrimack and Groveland are not going to do so well. And that's not anything that the school committee or the administration or we control. It's got completely to do with the Governor's budget and how he proposes the distribution of Chapter 78 to regional schools. However, in an effort to assist Merrimack and Groveland mitigate the effect of the assessment, they are offering to use their ESSR money such that if the Board passes the motion that the chairman has in front of him, and I've got it as well, and I apologize if we just got it all in the last few days, then our assessment would go down by $250,000. So in essence, they're using money that's in reserve, and they're offering to spend that and help us out. And I very much applaud the administration and the school committee's efforts to, you know, to try to engage the communities and help us out as best they can. So I would urge the Board to pass the motion. And assuming that you will do that, I need to relay that to Greg LeBrecque in the morning so that they can follow that into their budget deliberations.
Okay. Motion to allow the Pennsyltucket Regional School District to use a portion of its ESSER2 grant allocation to low...
Excuse me, one second. Mike, do you have that in front of you? Because I had instructed it to be in the top of your packet.
Yeah, Bill's reading it now.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. I came here very well.
I've never been, I've never been told my voice is too low, but I get it. Motion to allow the Pennsyltucket Regional School District to use a portion of its ESSER2 grant allocation to lower the fiscal year 2022 assessments as allowed in the Governor's House One budget language.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can we get a copy? I don't mind voting the lower assessments. I just want to get a copy of it afterwards so that I can see it.
Sure, we'll take care of that.
All right, well, roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill, yes. Me, Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. What else do we have here? We have a Create a Benefit Eligible Position for Conservation.
So just to preface this for the board, Mr. Chairman, in the, we had a resignation of the conservation agent a couple of months ago. We posted that in cooperation with the Conservation Commission, working with Mike Dempsey, the chair. Because it's a part-time position, I suspect at least in part because of that, because right now it's very hard to find any municipal employees of any, of any type. It's really quite extraordinary right now. We only had two applicants. One of the applicants was pretty well qualified, and I underscored pretty well qualified. And they were looking to relocate to this general area from out of state. The interviews were conducted by Rebecca, Mike Dempsey, and myself. Mike is chairman of the Finance Committee. Myself is HR Director. And Rebecca, as the, at the time, the department reorganization was being proposed. You hadn't yet approved it. But I invited Rebecca to be on the interview team, the presumption being that if the board did approve it, this would be a direct report to Rebecca. So we interviewed that candidate, and we selected one of the two. At that point, it was still a part-time position presumably. And Mike had asked that the Conservation Commission, the full commission, have the opportunity to review the candidate. Of course, that was readily agreed to. The commission had that interview. And I think during the course of the interview, the potential arose for this to be increased in order to make it more attractive to the candidate from out of state that we had selected because that candidate would much prefer to have a full-time job than a part-time one, obviously. And during the interview process, I had asked candidly, if you come to work here for part-time, how long are we going to have you? And the answer was, well, if I can find another part-time job to make it full-time, then I might be there for a while. And if not, then probably not that long, honestly. And that was a good answer, fair. So I think that the commission took the opportunity to have that conversation with the candidate and are offering the creation of what's a full-time job using 100% fee money. The person would be the conservation agent part-time, supported by conservation fee collections, and they would be an administrator of some definition at V.C. Park. And Mike can explain that. And again, the salary for their work at V.C. Park would be paid out of receipts. The only exposure to the, to the general budget would be to pay for the fringe benefits. Now, the majority of the fringe benefits are non-monetary benefits and don't affect the budget. There's really only two that do. One is health insurance. That's the big one. And the other is the FICO set aside, which is 1.45% withheld from the employee's pay and 1.45 matched by the town. And I would describe that as de minimis. It's a very small number for the entire municipal workforce. So health insurance really is the issue here. And a second issue arose, which was if the board is amenable to the creation of a full-time position in paying benefits, specifically health insurance, then the question arises, should we hire the person that we interviewed, knowing that we only had two people to select from because it was advertised as part-time? Or should we re-advertise now that if the board agrees to make it full-time? The thought being that if it's full-time benefited, we may get a much better pool of candidates. So with that background for the board's edification, I would invite through the chair any comment additionally that Mike Dempsey or Rebecca would want to have.
Mike? Maybe he's muted.
He's muted.
Mike, you're muted right now. You've got to unmute.
Maybe Catherine can unmute. Yep.
So as Kevin explained, I think he gave a pretty complete summary of our actions. The commission has plenty of work between direct commission work in V.C. Park. I think the full commission is excited about having both of these areas covered better than we have. Certainly volunteers are great. We've done a lot with volunteers. I'm a volunteer myself. But in knowing, knowing what it takes to do the commission's work, because that's what I'm doing now, is volunteer to cover. While we don't have an agent, typically I'm spending upwards of 20 hours a week average to cover that position. So I don't think there's a question as to whether the work is there.
Okay. I'll let the board weigh in in a second. From my perspective, if we have the ability to pay for the benefits piece of it, and that's more of a Kevin answer, I'm not opposed to that. I am kind of reluctant to move forward with this as presented because it was a part-time position that was advertised for. And then it was kind of haphazardly offered as a full-time position that I don't think was actually approved as full-time. I think we have to go out and re-advertise that to see what happens locally from candidates. But that's a board decision, not, that's a board decision, not just my decision. So Ed, do you have anything to add?
No, I'd like to see it, go out again as a full-time position and see if you can come up with additional candidates.
Bill?
I have to agree with Selectman Watson. It makes the most sense to me. It's almost like a bait and switch. We offered one thing and then it's migrated or morphed into something different. Now, to Kevin's point, I totally agree with him. We may get a totally different set of applicants, much more qualified, much more seasoned.
And local, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Jason?
When this position first became available, I looked at online at the municipal site, and almost every town close to us was looking for a conservation to fill this position. So my concern is if we do put it off to apply for a full-time position, we may lose the applicant that we have. And I'd like Mike to weigh in on that.
Yes. I agree with that concern. I thought that the best solution might be, Rebecca and I talked about this, is to hire this person part-time. And then if it works out okay, you know, July 1st, we would change it to a full-time position.
Well, that, that, that is frankly an interesting option because that gives town meeting the opportunity to weigh in on whether it should be made full-time, which, all things being equal, I think we all agree is the proper way to do business. So that would certainly satisfy the concern. I can tell you all what the health insurance numbers are if anybody's interested, you know, to approximate the cost. So that's, that's an alternative that actually works pretty well. You know, that, that, that might work. It's a good idea, Mike.
Yeah, one second. Kathy, you want to weigh in on anything?
What's that?
Kathy, did you want to weigh in on anything?
Thank you for calling somebody else. I forgot my name. It happens. So I feel like as a town as a whole, we've been like underfunding areas consistently and getting by on the backs of volunteers like Mike Dempsey, who, who, if we ever lost that, we would be so, so done. And I think that we have to start to think about some of these smaller departments that have been consistently underfunded. Year after year, we just get by and they make it work. And to stop doing that, there's nothing else that this COVID has shown me in the shutdown and all is that how we've been operating a lot of our departments on a shoe, you know, whatever you call it, a shoelace or string, whatever, that breaks very easily. And conservation, I think, is one of those areas. So I think if they find, have found a candidate that they feel really strongly about, I would think we could satisfy this posting requirement very quickly by just reposting it at the same time continuing discussions with the candidate that was favored and just, you know, wait a week or so or two weeks. I mean, by law, as long as it's posted, right? We've satisfied that part of it. I know in the past, we've always transferred fees in an article. Is that right, Mike? Transferred fees for the conservation agent in an article?
Yes.
Yeah, so would we transfer fees this year at all again, like at the special town meeting? Or would you prefer to wait till July 1st and do a new article?
No, we do it at the annual town meeting for FY '22.
Okay, so for this year, you'd be all set with what we already set up?
Yes.
So the only question is just to, to throw another posting up. I guess that's a Kevin question. You know, how, what's the legality of the part-time versus full-time posting?
Well, there's no necessary requirement to post this. Again, it's really a judgment call by the board. The, from a legal point of view, V.C. Park isn't part of the town budget, remember. It's off-budget. It's, it's an unusual creation in that it's, it's partly municipally, it's quasi-municipal, put it that way. So the supplementing a part-time town employee by employing them simultaneously at V.C. Park does not require any action by the town. It only requires action by the folks that manage V.C. Park. So you don't have to necessarily repost it. Now, you know, I would want to be sure because this person will be working for the Conservation Commission, and Mike is chairman from a policy point of view, but reporting on a day-to-day basis to Rebecca per the new organization. And I would want to be sure that they are both in agreement that they don't need to repost the position in order to cast a wider net for better candidates. If they're both satisfied this is a good enough candidate, that's fine with me. I was very impressed with the candidate. The only issue is that they don't possess the exact licenses that Massachusetts requires for a conservation agent at the present time. But this is a very, very high-quality candidate who I have no hesitation to say would get those licenses in a very quick, in very quick order. This person is frankly overqualified for this position and would have no problem getting the licenses. So, you know, if the board is, is in favor of letting the full-time position go forward, understanding effect of July 1, part-time till then, and understanding that the decision on health insurance would be a budgetary decision, then I think the only other box to check is to hear from Rebecca that she's satisfied that we don't need to repost to get a better qualified person. I mean, I think Mike addressed it, but I, I think.
Yes. The commission, the commission wants that.
I'm fully on board with the candidate. I thought she was equally impressive. But at the same time, my big thing is, again, that if we were to advertise the project, like the position for a full-time with benefits, I think we could have gotten a lot more qualified individuals who are local. So that is my big concern here, is that I don't think it was a fair and competitive process. And I think that we're shooting ourselves short for an individual who is not local and do not possess the same qualifications. But I do believe that there is a need for the position and there is a definite desire to have somebody in there who is multifaceted like this position or the individual who did apply.
Thank you, Rebecca. So if I could suggest to the board a strategy here, why don't you decide in the first instance if you're in favor of seeing this position become full-time? And once the board makes, or at least presented the town meeting to become full-time, once the board makes that decision, then the decision to re-advertise or not would need to be made depending upon what you decided in the first question. So why don't we resolve that one if that makes sense to the board?
Yeah, I do have two questions or one question, one comment. The funds for the salary for this person, where are they coming from?
I couldn't hear you, Mike. I'm sorry.
The funds for the salary for this person, either part-time or full-time, where are they coming from?
The part-time conservation agent component will come by a transfer from Epi Wetlands funds, which have, which has already been accomplished for this year. And as Mike correctly states, it's a revolving account, and that would be done at the town meeting as it has always been done. The funds for the other half of the job, i.e. the V.C. Park work, would require only a simple vote of the V.C. Park. What's the correct title, Mike? Commissioners, directors?
Management Committee. Management Committee.
Okay. So the management committee would simply decide that. There's no town action required.
Got it, okay. And the other comment that I wanted to make was, I get the feeling that hiring in town is not a structured program, that there's committees and departments that is kind of haphazardly going off and doing their own thing. And then we're kind of hoodwinked into, hey, we're going to do this, and we got to make a decision kind of off the cuff instead of a process that's in place for everybody to follow. And it seems like that's been happening more recently, say, the past four or five months than in previous times. So I'm in favor of this position being part-time initially and then moving to full-time at town meetings starting in July. I think that's a good way to address kind of the situation. I'm not in favor of being kind of bamboozled and hoodwinked into these positions with these random offerings being posted and then adjusted on the fly without a proper kind of procedural thing in place. So does somebody want to make a motion on whether or not we want to consider this a full-time position either upfront or July or whatever we want to do?
I'd definitely like to see town vote on it. I mean, we're adding a full-time person with benefits.
So what are we going to do? We're going to make some kind of decision on what this is going to look like, short-term and long-term?
I'd like to see a recommendation from the Finance Board.
Ed wants to see a recommendation from the Finance Board.
Yeah, they haven't discussed this budget yet. I don't know off the top of my head where it is in the schedule, but it's, it's before them either next, week after next or sometime after that. So they have not taken a position on it yet.
Jason?
I do, I do think, you know, it's a little complex because if you don't make the decision on proposing the full-time position to town meeting now, then presumably we've got to hire somebody on a part-time basis. And perhaps this person from out of state would be willing to do that, understanding that it's not full-time till later. That, of course, would obviate the question of re-advertising later because you couldn't, it really wouldn't be fair to pull somebody here from out of state, hire them part-time with the potential to become full-time, and then end up advertising and taking them out of the job. That would be grossly unfair. Right. So if you go full, and I'm also sensitive to the fact that I think the board should be, that Mike is doing this as a volunteer and has been doing that for some time. And that's kind of an extraordinary expectation going forward for any kind of an extended period of time. So we're a little bit on the horns of a dilemma here. You know, we've got to get somebody into the job on a part-time basis ASAP. So the proposal that Mike made tonight, which is to fill it part-time and then look at it at town meeting for July, I think kind of tracks you into a glide path that's gonna become, you're not gonna advertise again. If you take this candidate from out of state now and put that person in the job part-time, then that's the person who's gonna become full-time later if that comes to fruition. You're not gonna re-advertise it because that would simply be grossly unfair, plus you'd be paying unemployment.
Right.
So I think just the board needs to be aware of that so you don't get any surprises later. Is that fair to say, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think part-time initially with the potential to move to full-time based on town meeting vote, right? And you go from there.
Yeah, and the town, and the town meeting wouldn't be deciding on the VC Park component, it's exclusively-
Right.
-up to the VC Park Management Committee. The town meeting would only be deciding whether to provide the funding for the health insurance, which then would make it possible for this person to go full-time.
Right.
And I would also like to add that there should be some type of evaluation, of course, like we all have a six-month probationary period in which we need to report and make sure that we're performing the tasks and duties that have been assigned to us, would also be equally considered when considering whether or not we wanted to move to a full-time position.
That would be true if you have a six-month probationary period with evaluation in the bylaw or the personnel policy, and I would have to review it to see if that component is in it. You can't make that up. It's gotta be, you can't make that requirement unless it's supported by legislative action. So it would have to be there, Rebecca, we couldn't just impose it, we'd have to have it already on the books.
I think it is.
I recall at least a minimum of 90 days.
Yeah, I think there's at least a 90-day.
Yeah.
I can actually check it while you're chatting.
You don't have to bother, don't go crazy.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Hi, I just wanted to ask a question, just to make sure I'm understanding it all. The, we do vote a revolving fund for VZ, right? But we're going to put the whole salary for the full-time agent, if it's approved at town meeting, as 100% transfer from conservation fees?
Oh, conservation fees and VC Park fees, 50-50.
Okay, okay, so that's what I'm trying, so then would there be a line in the revolving account that we vote at town meeting for VC Park?
No.
No.
VC Park is not part of the town's budget. And I have not done, I know nothing about how that financial structure works, so I can't comment on it, except to say it's not part of the town budget. And by the way, there is a probationary period in your personnel procedures, that's six months, so you would be able to do that.
Okay, so my follow-up then is, would the annual town meeting, if we did decide to support full-time, which is where we're kind of heading, would the annual town meeting appropriate the full salary? Because then how would you get the VZ Park money? I don't, I don't-
The town meeting would appropriate the conservation agent portion of the salary by operation of a revolving account, a 150E and a half account. The portion of the salary, 50%, which is funded by VC Park, would be paid to the person directly in whatever way the VC Park Committee sets it up. It has nothing to do with the town meeting or the town.
Okay, so in the past, we've had an article that transfers from conservation fees.
Yes, you would still have it.
Right, and so then we, but we funded the salary for the part-time conservation agent, I thought, inside the omnibus, am I wrong?
No, it's a spec, well, I believe it's a spec, it has to be a special article, a 150E and a half, a 53E and a half revolving account requires a special article. You cannot do it in the budget.
Do you remember, Mike, how we did it last year in your budget? I just thought we did.
I guarantee you did it with a special article. You can't do it in the budget.
Well, we transfer fee, from the fee account to the salary account of the next fiscal year.
If it's a simple fee transfer-
Right.
-from the FB Wetlands Fund, then it's just, then it's just like taxes, it's just like cherry-sheade, it's just all in there, it's in the balancing formula. If it is a, and I don't know off the top of my head, if it's a revolving account, then it requires a separate town meeting vote. I don't know which way you do it, but whatever way you do it, that's how we'd continue to do it.
All right.
So, so part of this person's salary then is dependent on an outside source, that's what we're saying.
Yes.
Sort of like the enterprise fund in Waterman Store, in a weird kind of way, yeah.
Yeah, and a weird kind of way is a good way to say it, because it's not at all like an enterprise fund, but that's okay.
I know, but I mean, just to kind of, you know, so that if we put an-
It's okay, it's all right.
If we put an asterisk and said, you know, this, because I like to let the town meeting know how much a person is being paid at some point, yeah, okay.
We need to get out of here, this is, this is already coming up on three hours here.
That sounds good.
So let's, and just as a side note, and not to offer up any further discussion, VC isn't totally separate from the town. I mean, we do pay insurance on that property, which is a hefty increase over the last couple of years, so it's not 100% removed from anything that happens with town. So if we could figure out someone want to make a motion or some kind of stipulation on part-time to maybe move to full-time based on half the pay that is not covered by VC and benefits?
Well, actually, if the board is okay with hiring this candidate part-time to be the conservation agent, you don't need to do anything because the Conservation Commission on the Chapter 40, Section 8C, has the authority to hire employees. The Board of Selectmen's involvement is to establish salary, but the Concom is not proposing a change in salary, so there's no real vote of the board required to do anything. At the time that the decision would be made to provide the funding for the health insurance or not, that would be part of the budget, and that would be a later decision you'd make as part of the budget decision.
Okay, so we've had a 15-minute discussion that doesn't pertain to us voting on anything. So I got that right?
The only way, the only way you would have been, you would have needed to vote tonight is if you wanted to make this full-time right away, in which case that would have required a vote of the board, yep.
Got it. Yeah, Mike.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Through you to Kevin, I thought that you were gonna work out a way to offer her the benefits now because that was one of the questions that she had.
Yeah, we can, we can offer her benefits now, we can hire her full-time now, no problem at all. The question is, will the board authorize the expenditure of the funds to pay her the health insurance? Because that could potentially require a budget overrun. You know, the health insurance budget is always a bit of a guessing game anyways because you have to, you predicate it on the basis of how many people are gonna take the health insurance, and you're doing that in April for July 1 of the same year, concluding June 30 the following year, and you get all kinds of things happening during the year that cause people to either drop the health insurance or take it. So we never know exactly where the health insurance budget sits at any given moment with respect to is it sufficient? And remember, any employee can take the health insurance during the open enrollment in April and May for July 1, but if they have a qualifying event during the course of the fiscal year, they can take the health insurance off-cycle, and a qualifying event is new employment. So if this be, this employee becomes a new employee, that's a qualifying event on the cobra, they can elect to take the town's insurance right away. Presumably, we didn't budget for that because we didn't budget for this full-time person. That's what requires the Board of Selectmen's concurrence to say, okay, we're okay with that, we'll pick up the tab for the, for the health insurance. To give you the number, because it might affect the board's decision, the town, as a member of the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission, they have approximately 12 different plans, so I'm gonna give you the bottom and the top, okay? This person needs individual insurance, not family. So they would require either, on an annual basis, and then I'll give you the quarterly number, they would require either $5,989 of town money for the least beneficial health plan that the GIC offers, up to $10,474, which is the most expensive plan that the GIC offers, and that's the 75% share that the town pays. Now, this person would not need all of that because they'd be coming in, effective, let's say, to keep it easy in my head, March 1st, they wouldn't actually be here March 1st, I don't think, but let's say they came in March 1st, they need March, April, May, June, so one-third of those numbers. So in the case of the very expensive plan, they'd need about $3,100 for the balance of the fiscal year, and in the case of the less expensive plan, they'd need about $18, $1900 for the balance of the fiscal year. Frankly, $1900, $2,000, you know, we get a $20 million budget, I'm pretty optimistic we can absorb that. If the board wants to make this position full-time right away, I'll figure out where to get the couple of thousand bucks. That's not a problem.
Well, but even if she comes on part-time at 20 hours, she's gonna need benefits.
Presumably, she would come on at 19 hours, not 20. Because indeed, Mike, you are correct, 20 hours is benefit-eligible under the statute and 32B, and 19 hours is not eligible under 32B.
Right, but you have been in the negotiations with her, I haven't, so I don't know, I thought that, you know, part of the traction of her coming here, moving from down south was that she was gonna get benefits right away.
The conversation I had with her once all this unfolded, just to find out if she would give the board a selectmen time to decide if they wanted to provide those benefits or not, which is not my decision, if I could make it, I would have, but it ultimately ends up being a board decision. So I asked her, would you be willing to wait a couple of weeks till the board makes that decision? She said yes. And I said, are you currently a candidate for another position such that you might get that and not be able to take this? She said no. So if the board wants to authorize the couple of thousand dollars to benefit this individual between March 1 roughly and June 30th and make her full-time right away at no cost of the town, then I'm quite, quite optimistic we can figure out where to get the couple of thousand to pay for the health insurance.
So shouldn't the selectmen vote for that now?
They have to.
I'm a bit confused because we spent 15 minutes talking about something that we weren't gonna vote on, and the last five minutes talking about something that we have to vote on. And I think most of us have thought that offering part-time initially doesn't make us feel like we've been hoodwinked and backed into a corner to do this full-time tonight. That's my fear. So if we want to move forward with part-time now and then work for July 1 to do full-time, that's my preference, but I'm only one person. Phil?
I'm listening to Rebecca, and Rebecca said that she'd like to rebate that hook and cast it back into the ocean to see if she can find a bigger, better fish? Did I not understand that correctly? That now that the, you know, the parameters have changed, she would like to go out and find maybe a better candidate? Rebecca?
My only thought was that if we are going to offer a full-time position with benefits, I think that we could in fact attract a lot more qualified candidates for the position. However, that being said, the individual that we did in fact interview was very qualified, and I think there's a lot of room for her to expand here in Groveland. So it's not to say that she does not, you know, fit the position, it's just to say that we did advertise the position for part-time without benefits. I think it was even 10 to 15 hours is what was actually placed in the job description. And I just think that in terms of, you know, advertising, that's a little unfair and doesn't really, you know, cast the net into, you know, qualified individuals who could apply for the position, knowing that they could have actually received benefits and that type of salary.
And to Jason's point, he had looked at other town power into the same role, and they have facilities, so I get that it's a tough decision to make where we're kind of like, we need to make some kind of decision tonight. What that looks like is kind of up for grabs, but, you know, we can't do nothing. I think reposting it at this point and then saying, we're not gonna hire this woman is probably a bad decision in my eyes, but I'm only one person. Jason?
I agree, I think, I think we should probably move forward and we should do it for full-time now so we can get the position filled, we can get Mike the help he needs, not only in the conservation, but also in VC.
Ed?
It, maybe this woman will reapply if it comes out that it's now a full-time position.
Kathy, quickly?
Yeah, real quick, I just think we have an empty position, it's an important position in town. I like you, I wish this had come in our packet with it organized on our agenda, with all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, but that's not how it's happening, and I feel like if we push it off, we're gonna have the same 30-minute discussion again, so I want to move forward.
Move forward?
How? I make a motion?
Front up the money for the health insurance and hire this person, and then go to town meeting and explain what's going on.
So you're opting for full-time?
No, part-time with benefits, all right? We can do 20 hours, it's still, anything under 32 hours, my understanding, in our town, any position doesn't work, what, 32 hours is considered part-time? There's part-time with benefits, part-time without benefits, so full-time is like a weird category where they get a different retirement thing or something, that was how it's been explained to me.
Employees are benefited at 20 hours.
Yes, but they're not necessarily full-time until they're like 32 in our town, I don't know why, it's just the way-
Yeah, that, that's correct, but the, the only difference between 20 and 32 is degree, it's more of the same, it's not different. At 20 hours a week, they get health insurance-
Correct.
-and retirement.
Right.
At 32, they get the same health insurance and they get more retirement, that's the only difference.
Correct, and 32 in our town is called full-time, that's all I'm saying, and so part-time is anywhere from zero to under 32. I guess I just want to move this off of the plate, we have a lot on our plate. So I'm all, I'm fine with voting to pay some small portion of the insurance benefit to get us to the annual town meeting. I mean, these things are happening through the-
All right, I get it, is it a part-time position that you're promoting, that you want to do part-time?
Yeah, yeah, I would just put her at 20 hours, yeah.
Ed?
Look, in my opinion, after listening to everything, if you're gonna pay, if you're gonna pay the benefits, then bring her on a full-time position, it's not costing the town anything, it's coming out of conservation, it's coming out of VZ Park, if you're gonna pay her the benefits, bring her on full-time.
You were gonna say something or make a motion?
I was gonna make a motion to allow Mike Dempsey to hire her full-time with benefits.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? Kathy, any further discussion, real quick?
No.
My, my comment again is I feel like I've been hoodwinked into this and bamboozled and kind of pushed into a corner to do this tonight. I understand the role, I understand the position, I don't like the way it was set up, and I don't like the way the hiring process has been, but that's a bigger discussion for another time. So all in favor? Ed? For roll call?
Yes.
Phil?
No.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm gonna say no as well. Motion passes anyways. All right, well, that was a fun 35 minutes of round-and-round circusness, so let's go to correspondence. Xfinity Form 500 for year-end 2020 Customers' Video Services, Mass DOT Environmental Notifications, Proposed Subdivisions, 106 King Street. Correspondence from Town Government Study Committee for Finance Director to Town Administrator Finance. Recommendations from the- from the Interim Finance Director. We got a motion to adjourn at-
At eight twenty-nine PM.
All in favor? Somebody second, please, second, somebody second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you might have to roll call, we're shooting on video.
Aye.